Bob is there?
Yeah, okay. This is Bob's office meets.
Okay, this is the North Bozoni Board of Appeals, October 26, 2021 meeting. And we have an introduction from the governor. This open meeting of the North Bozoni Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16, 2021, and act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the zoning board of appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the South Bozoni Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting, they do so by going to North Bozoni Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. And we just like to have the board members recognize, I'll say their name, Fran Backstrom.
Present.
Brad Blanchett.
Present.
Jeff Lewand.
Present.
Paul Tagliafieri. Suzanne Sislic.
Sislic, here. You can call me Suzie, too.
Excuse me?
You did. I'm very impressed. Very impressed. And you can call me Suzie. It's fine.
Okay, Suzie, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and Mike Patan has notified the board, Kathy, that he's gonna be 10 to 15 minutes late. And the staff, Kathy Jubit.
Yeah.
Fred Litchfield.
Yeah.
And Bob Federico.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we'll open the meeting. And the first item on the agenda. And this is a continuation of the petition from RJ Deveraux Corporation for a variance for an industrial use on the property located at 200 Bartlett Street, map 66, Basel 7, in the industrial zone district, in the groundwater overlay district areas 1 and 3. This is a continuation. And Suzie, were you at the last meeting?
Yes.
Because Mac is unable to attend right now, so we'll have you as the alternate. Bona?
Okay. It's my first time.
All right, do we have Paula Deveraux? Paula?
I am here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We also need to bring, actually, I think Jim's doing that, because there's also a Vito and Rick Gates and Joel Quick. Hi, Vito. Yep, and Dario, he's on. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Rick Gates is on?
Yes, Rick is on. Yep.
Okay. Paul, this is a continuation. Did you have anything to say as we get started?
Yes, my name is Paula Deveraux, I'm partner at Pierce Atwood in Boston, representing RJ Deveraux Corp. With respect to the matter before you at 200 Bartlett Street. We were blessed before you, your meeting on September 28, where it was continued in order to go back to the groundwater advisory committee with respect to, there were some questions about the list of chemicals that were going to be stored on the site. To give people just a background, this is a site where Lammy's Automotive is, and there's two vacant buildings right now. RJ Deveraux has a contract to purchase the property in order for it to become a contractor's yard. The property is located in both the groundwater 1 and the groundwater 3 districts. And we're seeking a variance to use the currently vacant building in the groundwater 3 area as an accessory automotive shop for the main use as a contractor's yard. So when we were before you, there was a question about the chemicals. We, since that time, have submitted a complete list of chemicals with containment, how the chemicals are going to be contained, and also a floor plan that shows the general location of the chemicals in the storage containers and how it's going to work. Now, this floor plan is just a draft at this point. After the zoning board of appeals, we have to go back, we have to go to the site plan review with the planning board, and we also have to meet with the fire department. And we anticipate that there could be some changes to the actual locations of which the chemicals are going to be stored, but they will be stored in the proper containment, containment containers. And it will all be stored within this building and not the other building that's also vacant, that's within the groundwater 1 district. I don't know if you'd like Dario or Vito to share their screens to show you what we submitted to the groundwater advisory committee. I do believe that you have before you a letter from Fred Litchfield, the town engineer, based on what the groundwater advisory committee voted at its meeting on the 20th. So this shows, this plan shows the general site plan and where the Deveraux maintenance is where the building that we're talking about, where the chemicals will be stored. The administrative building, there will not be chemicals stored in that building. I believe you have the list of chemicals before with you. And I just wanted to see if there were any questions or if you wanted to get into it in any further detail.
I don't have any questions. Any other board members have questions? Suzie?
Hi, I didn't have a chance to really study Fred's memo because it came in so late. And this was a lot of information. Chair, could Fred go over it a little bit? Just go into the memo a little bit to explain it. I've been trying to read it on my phone as I was running around before this meeting. I didn't get it until like 5:10, I think, tonight.
Maybe we should just have Fred Litchfield explain it as he wrote this letter, so.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I was hoping Fred could do. Thank you.
Okay, Fred, could you relate to us what this October 25 letter is?
Sure, I'd be happy to. As Attorney Deveraux pointed out, the applicant did return to the groundwater committee. Because of a scheduling issue, we were only able to meet last week on Wednesday. And so the timeframe that we usually have to prepare that letter is a little bit crunched up this time. So I apologize for the late submission to you. But the good news is they did supply all the information that was requested. They have submitted a list of chemicals totaling approximately 758, actually exactly 758 gallons. That's what the committee agreed to. Let's see, they asked me to make sure the wording was appropriate. So they wanted to offer these conditions if the ZBA was interested in granting the variance. So if there's an approval, they would like to offer the items in my letter as conditions of that approval. If the, if the board chooses to approve. The first item on the letter indicates that there are 758 gallons. The materials list of chemicals and the proposed floor plan that you see before you were attached to that email. I guarantee that would be almost impossible to read on your phone. But there is a hard copy here in the office and the applicant is able to walk you through the floor plan if you like.
Sorry, Fred, Fred?
Yes.
All right, I don't mean to interrupt. This is Brad. Would you, do you have access to like a mouse where you can point to where these things are going to be stored on the property?
I am not the one sharing the screen, so I believe that's Dario. He could kind of walk you through it. This plan that's on the screen is the site plan. What I can, what I can do is ask him if he wouldn't mind taking this down and putting up the floor plan because all the chemicals are to be stored within the maintenance building. None in the administrative building. And so that might be more appropriate for the committee. That was really the focus of the discussion with the groundwater committee was this floor plan that you now see before you and the list of chemicals and the various types of cabinets that is basically a belts and suspenders operation. The cabinets allow for the storage inside the building to prevent spills from a day-to-day use. But in the event of a catastrophic failure or some kind of event, there are sprinklers in the building, there'll be floor drains in the building, and they will lead to a tight tank that will capture all of the sprinkler water as well as any chemicals that might be spilled on the floor within the maintenance building and therefore keeping them from getting out into the drainage system in the parking lot and then potentially back into the groundwater. So the, the first comment really leads to a concern that the applicant had. The second sentence talks about the proposed floor plan was intended to be for reference only and modifications within the building are acceptable provided the floor plan, the floor drains are allowed to capture all the water within the building so that nothing could escape through the garage doors, driveways. So everything will be sloped towards the drains and can't just run across the floor and out into the parking lot. And that there are adequate storage cabinets throughout the facility to handle all the material that's stored within the building. The second comment is about the proposed maintenance building will be equipped with floor drains connected to a tight tank, which is to be sized to accommodate the chemicals stored within the building as well as the sprinkle of water. There is still a need for the applicant before he gets to the site plan to reach out to the fire department to make sure that they can give him adequately conservative response time that the sprinklers would need to run until they get onsite and get the fire or whatever the event is under control. And that dictates the size of that tight tank. It's not specified at this point because that timeframe is not known, but they've agreed to provide a tight tank adequate to handle the timeframe that the sprinkler waters would be going off until the fire department can get everything under control. The applicant has indicated and agreed to the buildings being heated with natural gas rather than oil. The construction materials, which are not shown on this plane, but on the previous plane, they were referred to as spoil piles. They are to be permanently covered so that the rainwater can't mix with them and draw silt across the property. Spoil piles are, as my understanding from the applicant's presentation, is material that's taken out of the ground on a site, but not necessarily contaminated. Just naturally, natural material that is taken out and then replaced with clean gravel or fresh gravel from gravel pit as opposed to putting the same material back in the ground. They, they take it away. Actually, they use a vacuum to pull a lot of the material out of the ground. And so it's not readily available to go back in the hole, so they get gravel delivered to the sites and then they have extra material left over. But it is not intended to be contaminated soil of any kind. They're not allowed to work with that material. And perhaps if there's a question about that, they could elaborate a little bit more. I believe Rick Gates from Deveraux could speak to that. The fifth item on my letter talks about the drainage in the parking lot. Entire site shall be regraded and repaved to include a berm around the entire limit of the paved surfaces to allow the drainage system to capture all the runoff within the paved surface. The site plan shall include a drainage system designed which shall be in performance with all federal, state, and local stormwater regulations. The applicant has been made aware of the local stormwater bylaw that was approved at this past annual town meeting. And they will be subject to that permit as well through the Conservation Commission. There was some discussion at the previous meeting with the groundwater committee about previous contamination on the site. It's my understanding that that may have been resolved, but the groundwater committee, based upon my recommendation, requested that a summary from a status report from a licensed site professional regarding the environmental compliance of any and all previous contamination on the site be submitted prior to the issuance of the building permit. It's kind of a, a chance for them to document that it's the status of any cleanup that was going on and the interpretation of where the DEP stands with any environmental violations that happened on that site prior to their taking ownership. They've agreed, it seems like a reasonable thing for us to have in our file going forward in the event that they don't, they go to sell someplace else, to someone else later on. Number seven involves the applicant shall submit the following items with the site plan application. One is evidence of approved Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection of any industrial waste treatment disposal system or any wastewater treatment system over 15,000 gallons per day. So that's, they're not indicating that they'll need to have any industrial waste disposal, but this is a, these three items are required in the special permit process for getting a special permit in groundwater. By granting the variance, they won't need a special permit in groundwater. And so these items should be presented with the site plan so that we can confirm that they are meeting this, the process of getting a special permit. But by granting this variance, they will not have to abide by that process. Number two talks about the underground storage of toxic or hazardous materials, evidence of a qualified professional supervision of the system design and installation. I don't believe they have that, but in the event that they do, they will need to provide professional supervision. And then the last one is a analysis by a technically qualified expert certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to public health or ecological damage could result. Again, it's a standard, a statement that's required with any special permit in groundwater area. They'll not be required to get the special permit, so we're asking for them to supply that. It pretty much generally comes with the drainage analysis verifying that they're not doing anything to harm the groundwater by using this property. Number eight is the applicant's site plan shall confirm that the increase in post-development net runoff volume shall not exceed existing conditions by more than 15%. The impervious cover of the building lot has increased over existing conditions by no more than 40% or the lot coverage does not exceed that amount of lot coverage permitted by the underlying zoning where proponent can demonstrate and certify, except to the extent of naturally occurring pH and temperature components of surface water quality and groundwater quality standards that runoff waters leaving the developed site via surface flow will not cause a violation of Class B water quality standards. And runoff waters leaving the site via groundwater will not cause a violation of Class 1 groundwater quality standards. And any onsite sewage disposal is less than or equal to 220 gallons per 10,000 square feet of lot area. And any water supply developed onsite shall not diminish total yield of any town of Northboro water supply. Again, that is straight out of the bylaw. It's a, it's a statement that's required for someone getting a special permit in a groundwater area. Then number nine is the applicant's site plan shall confirm that there shall be no onsite disposal of any waste or processed materials, no outside storage of toxic or hazardous materials, have controlled, contained drainage facilities in areas of potential spillage or release, adequate contingency plans in case of spillage or release, and approved routing of suppliers and haulers of any toxic or hazardous materials to or from the site. The proponent for a building or occupancy permit must demonstrate on an annual basis to the building department and port of health that all applicable federal, state, and town of Northboro licenses, permits, and standards for the handling, use, storage, and disposal of any regulated materials have been obtained or met. And again, that's a standard requirement for a special permit in the groundwater area for projects such as this.
Excellent.
I just, I just wanted to add that Deveraux Corp is, is accepting of all these conditions and intends to comply with them during its ownership of the property. We also believe that this will be, that a lot of these conditions will result in a much better working property than is there currently, given that there's no really stormwater treatment on that site at all right now.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else on your team have anything, any comments from us? Paula? Well? Okay.
Sorry, not that I'm aware of. I'm not sure, Rick, if you want to add anything?
Did you want us, this is Dario, I'm sorry, did you want us to walk you through it briefly?
Yes, please.
Yeah, because I think hopefully that'll, and I'll just start with the site plan real quick. Let me, let me pull that up. So basically here, everything that we're doing, and the real reason to see the site plan is to understand where our chemical storage is. It's all going to be, can you see the cursor? Someone just raise your hand if somebody can see, okay.
Yes.
So everything would be in the maintenance building as far as any of our hazardous waste. I do want to clarify what's going on here. Basically, we've got gravel and sand stored there. The word spoils is a bit misleading, but just to clarify what that is, one thing is we only use the vacuums in the event that there's an unknown condition out in the field. In most cases, we know where and how we're digging, but if there's a situation where we're not sure where there's a pipe, those would be used, so it's not an everyday frequent use. We do not and will not touch any contaminants for several reasons. Number one, the client of Deveraux, the gas companies, don't allow us to. If we do see a contaminant, because there's someone monitoring the digs at all time, and it's not just sight, they actually do sight and smell and everything else. If they find a contaminant, Deveraux walks off the job. The waste management people show up, they clean up whatever they have to clean up. And once it's all cleaned up, Deveraux would come back. I was talking to Rick today. That's happened once in the last three years with them where they actually hit a contaminant. So it's not like every other dig they're finding, you know, oil or arsenic or anything else. So it's very, very infrequent. But they're not allowed to touch it, so it can't come to our site from any, any of the digs. So it's really just, it's just dirt that we can't fit back in the hole that we sift to get the big rocks out and then chip it away. And, and those are here, outside and covered. So there's zero contaminants here. And everything that we do have would be in the groundwater overlay district 3. Nothing that we have would be in groundwater overlay district 1. So on the site, it's kind of split that way on purpose. So that's just a fundamental view of the site. Just one other thing as far as the environment's concerned. We didn't encroach on any of the setbacks, building or impervious, just to be more conservative and, and just better neighbors and better to the environment. So even the, the buffer for the do not build buildings, we're not even paving. So it's just trying to be a little greener. And then we'll, I'll go to the, any questions on the site plan, I'll jump to the floor plan. It's just to give everybody a picture, that's all.
I just have a question. The proposed covering of the material you're bringing back, is that going to be a building? We have to.
It'll be, in essence, it's like a shed. Because it's got to be open from one end for the trucks just to go in and out day-to-day. What we're trying to avoid is water washing out the gravel and, and having that go in the parking lot. Even though we have oil separators and chemicals, all that's in the parking lot, we just don't want to deal with it. So if we keep it covered, you keep it dry, it's just that much less to maintain.
Okay. Any other board members have questions at this point?
Ms. Chair, just to your point, if I may, will it be sided on three sides? Is that what you mean?
In essence, yes. So what you do is you put a little concrete wall on three sides, just like the town has on Route 20, except it's covered. Because the back goes, have to have, to take the gravel away, you have to have kind of a stop. So they'll, they'll push the, the little bobcat into the, into the pile of gravel. And so it doesn't leave the pile. There's a concrete retaining wall, if you will, around it. And then it's covered so that, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if the rain gets on it, just like most of these story yards. But we're, we're keeping it dry for our own use. It's just easier to use. But it's open on one end for the vehicles to get access to it. It's like a big carport, if you will.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so the other, the other question was for us to quantify and qualify the, the chemical list. So we sent a complete list. There's also hundreds of pages of the MSDA sheets to back up the list. And what we did to make it really simple is we took Fred's first six items that he spelled out in his letter. And in our notes, first five items are his notes, just again, assuring you that we're going to do everything he wants to do. We just made him part of the drawings here. So, so one through five is us paraphrasing the one through five that we got. In, in the building itself, we have in our, in our short list of chemicals, just a very short list, we quantify the amount. We also show how it's being stored and where it's being stored. And the belt and suspenders comment is, is really this simple. The entire floor is going to be repoured and sloped to a spill containment system. Anything that does spill would go into a tight tank, which means there's no way for it to get to the environment. It's like a bathtub and the drain goes, you know, into a bucket that no one can access. And that's, that gets pumped out, you know, periodically. But the, the belt and suspenders part is even every chemical that we are storing is being stored in a spill containment container as well. So if we reach in a cabinet and spill a bottle of, you know, power steering fluid, it spills, it's in the cabinet, it's contained within the cabinet, doesn't even make it to the floor of the tight tank at that point in time. The same thing with the oil. If we're changing the oil on a vehicle, they're scored in a 55 gallon drum, which is in a, in a containment storage container. We don't need to do that because we have the tight tank, but we're doing both. It's, it's kind of extra careful, it's belt and suspenders, and it's easier to operate in a clean facility. So that just allows us to keep it clean. And as far as capacities, you'll note the notes on the side. How do I get rid of that kind of? Okay, the notes on the side, just to let everybody know, when we have a cabinet that we need 32 gallons of storage, we actually have two cabinets with each cabinet having 60 gallons of capacity. So there's technically the ability to store 120 gallons of waste, even though we're only storing 32 gallons of flammable materials. We had talked at one time about being able to store a little more of a percentage than what we have. So we, we've done that, done beyond, way beyond what we're storing. And, and those, you know, for example, would be cabinet B here and cabinet B here. Those are the two cabinets. This is servicing the work on the, on the basically one cylinder machines, whether it's a weed whacker or cutter. Machines, whether it's a weed whacker or cutter, and this would be the, the same cabinet here, working on one of their trucks. So we also have way more storage capacity for the waste than what we're supplying, and then the non-flammables. We have a total of 22 gallons, but our spill containment without the tight tank is 120 gallons, so. Everything we've done here, hopefully you guys can see, it's, it's weighing above and beyond, not only what's required by code, but. These guys want to be here forever, and they don't want to deal with it either, so there is the belt and suspenders. And the spill containment for the building is designed to hold everything. Plus the time of a sprinkler discharge determined by the fire chief. So that's pretty much it. Yeah, I think that's about everything that. Everybody had asked for, but now you get an idea of where it is within the building. This area here is where the outside storages, so. As far as an aesthetics reason, it's behind the building, so nobody has to see it from the street, I know that's not. An environmental issue, it's just, again, trying to do the right thing. And I think that's all I got, unless you have questions.
Any questions by board members?
I do, Mr. Chair, Susie. Um, when you, when you had shown the site plan of all the buildings in the parking lot. Will the, I know it doesn't exactly matter, but will the vehicles, where will they be entering in the parking lot? Like, I know you said you were doing oil changes, and maybe there might, you know, you want to handle all the, the smaller repairs on the things. Are they going to be entering from the, what we see as the right-hand side entrance from the parking lot to be coming in?
Right here, on, on this side here, we have, we have a drive that goes through the building. And we also have our receiving docks here, so everything would come in, everything would come in here. We have the service base here, we may be moving them to this side at this point in time, because. You folks had asked for a little more green space, and I think if we can make this green, we may be able to get the service base here. And I think also for, again, those of you who, who don't know. Most of these vehicles don't come here day to day, they go to the job site, they'll come here and get serviced on occasion, but. Their job is to go to the job, do the work, go home, if they have to come here to, to do something. To get serviced, they will, but they don't even pick up supplies necessarily, Deveraux has what they call runners. That are people that go back and forth to the jobs, so they can keep the workers working. If that answers your question, but this parking lot is no different than any parking lot in any. Groundwater overlay district in, in the whole city, so there's nothing special, we're not bringing in tanks full of oil or anything else, so it should be. It should be pretty darn safe.
Okay, anyone else?
So I just want to, I guess this is a question probably more for staff. Bob, your letter on April 12th sort of lays out exactly why we're, we're here today. And I just want to confirm that there's really been no changes at all in sort of what the applicant is asking for, right, so. The main use of this property, right, is considered a contractor's yard, okay, and they're asking. Through, through yours zoning interpretation letter on the 12th. Essentially for an accessory use for auto repair, right, within this one building that is currently on groundwater three.
That's correct. You know, there have been some minor changes from the first time we spoke, essentially the. Case in point would be the covering over the four bays for the stockpiles that are out in the field that they, they intend on keeping dry. It's on a paved surface anyway, so in terms of, you know, the use and the. You know, the, the impervious cover service, it's, it doesn't make a difference. All it is at this point is just a structure through the building code. In terms of the use, it's still primarily a contractor's yard. Contractors' yards, you know, you know, there has to be some sort of maintenance done on some of these equipments. And, you know, putting it into a groundwater three in that separate building with proper containment, I think is probably the safest way to do it. And the maintenance division is. Subordinate to the main use of the property.
Okay, so they still would require. A special permit from the planning board for the contractor's yard, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And, and I might add to that, it's, it's, there's not a category within our town regs for, for, for what this really is. It's actually a training facility and, and kind of a maintenance and storage shop. But the closest thing we could find that was something that was listed that, that would make sense was that, because the whole. Intent here is to be able to keep people up to date with all the software and techniques in the administrative building. So that's kind of the lion's share of the people here, the, the maintenance shop is just that, and they have a very small fleet, but. And they're doing minimal maintenance, just so everybody knows, they're not doing engine overhauls or transmissions or anything else. And they're just maintaining some of their own vehicles, not all.
Susie, do you have a question?
I just wanted, um, the training, I don't, I don't know, I can't remember it from the last meeting. So the training that's going on as a training facility is all going to happen in the administrative building then?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, that, and that's just showing people new techniques for digging, new software, new, new equipment, new pipes, how do we connect this pipe to that pipe? Any new technology and new codes that come in and regulations, they have to keep their people up to date, so it's, it's just a. A training facility, they'll have parts stored there and, and say, hey, this is how we're going to weld this pipe, because that's changing, because the new. Codes say we have to do this, so that's what that's all about.
And I would like to, excuse me, my name's Rick Gates, I'm the project manager with this. Piece of property, so the administrative building is going to be somewhat offices. A couple of small offices, but the training really is, like Dario said, which includes first aid training. Safety training, all the different trainings you would need, you know, with the COVID that's going on, anything along those lines, so it's, it's going to be strictly. Strictly administrative, there's, there's no need whatsoever to use it for anything other than that. The, the maintenance facility is, quite frankly, much larger than we need. Seventy, seventy-five percent of our maintenance will be on small engine, single cylinder engine. Repair and maintenance. Vehicle wise, we have very few vehicles compared to the size of the company, most of the vehicles. Out in the street that we use, we, we contract out. Foreman own their own vehicles and we pay them for them that way, so this is, this is not going to be a jiffy loop kind of a situation where every day. Vehicles are going to be coming in and out, not nearly that, and as far as, we have to call ourselves the contractors yard, because we are contractors. But this is not going to be a site where there's going to be dump trucks rolling in on a minute by minute basis, even hourly. We may have a few come in, in, in a day. And basically, the entire property is going to be a support property for our people in the field. We have right, currently right now about 20, 20 crews right now that would be supported by this yard, and by support, I mean the. Small equipment, replacing it when it's worn out or broken, and the connections, the small. Couplings and variety of different stock that the. The crews need to, to work on a daily basis, putting risers up on, up to a house, to supply natural gas to a house. And the pipes that are in the ground, we supply them from this piece of property. They also, we also get a lot of, a lot of those same supplies directly from the gas company in South Borough, so it's not like we, we have to have. Two hundred different people doing that delivery, that kind of thing, again, it's, it's a support. Piece of property, and it's, it's kind of hard to relate to everyone what we do and how we do it. But if I were to show you a time lapse of the current property in Shrewsbury that we're using to do the same thing. You would be rather bored, there, there's times when there's nobody coming in and out for literally hours at a time. It's not going to be a facility that's even close to our neighbors with all the deliveries running in and out, that kind of thing. So it's not, it's not a, what everyone would envision as far as a contractor's yard with, with all the large equipment, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to fill that in for you guys.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions?
So I'll just say, I, I just lost power for about 60 seconds or so. And I, I think that's probably why Dario is not here, because I think his offices are right near me. Brad just texted me saying that he also lost power, but it just came back on, so.
It just happened at Town Hall too.
Okay, so just, yeah, so I, I, I missed sort of some of what Rick was saying. But just to kind of let everyone know where. Sorry.
I think we lost, I think we lost Mark Rutan too.
Oh yeah, Mark too, we go see him, Mark's right down the street.
Because, because Mark, Mark came on to the meeting at just about like 10 after 6.
Okay.
No, I don't see Brad either, but my, I was saying my lights flickered and now my camera is yellow, so.
I think we might lose power already, any minute, so.
Yeah, and we lost, oh, Jeff's back.
There, alright.
Okay.
I, I think I'm in a separate part of town. But the benefits, the downfall of Zoom though, right, storm comes through when we lose power. We lose the meeting.
We'll keep going until we lose it. Is Mark back?
No, Mark's not back and Brad's not back. And, and given that it's a variance. Dick, I would think that the applicant would want all five voting members.
That's correct.
Present.
Yes, thank you, yes.
So I don't know, not, not to, you know, this is your meeting, but maybe you want to just put a pause on this? And maybe do just a couple of those administrative details, and hopefully we'll get everyone back.
The weather's supposed to get worse instead of better, so.
Okay.
No, we're going to go with that, we can take care of these administrative things for a few minutes and. Put you on the background, Paula.
That's fine, that's, that's, that's fine with us.
Alright, we'll give it about 10, 15 minutes maybe, and then we'll see whether or not to just keep going or shut it down. We can be in another time. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the petition of Alfie Latori. For a special permit slash special permit with site plan approval and special permit. Groundwater Protection Overlay District for the operation of a nail school at 300 West Main Street Building C dash three. First floor, map 81, parcel 11, located in the Business West Zoning District. And the Groundwater Protection Overlay District Areas two and three, and Kathy, you said the applicant is. Sent an email asking to withdraw?
Yes, the, the applicant first sent an email to the groundwater, actually to Fred Litchfield as the. Staff for the Groundwater Advisory Committee and first asked to withdraw from the groundwater meeting. I, I get, I believe that their, that their potential tenant is no longer. In, in the running for this vacant space, so the building manager also then sent. You know, an, an email which we accept to the, to myself and the town clerk's office. Asking to withdraw without prejudice from tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Your motion?
Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice of the application for 300 West Main Street.
Second.
Seconded by Paul, motion made by Fran. Okay, all those in favor? Fran?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Brad's not here, right?
No, but we can. Susie and Jeff.
And Jeff?
Aye.
And Susie?
My first vote, aye.
And I'm voting aye, so. We accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
And we'll, and we'll just note for the minutes, Mr. Chairman, that both Susie and Jeff. As alternates were, were moved over to voting members for this purpose.
Okay, thank you. And they'll also be moved over for the next petition. Okay, this is to consideration of petition for Opportunities LLC for a special permit to extend the use by 50 feet. Into a more restricted zone at 40 and 44 Lawrence Street, map 105, parcels three and four. Located in the residential C zoning district and the groundwater protection overlay district areas two and three. And again, we've, we see the, Kathy received the message asking that this be continued to the next meeting, which is November 23rd.
Yes.
And Jeff and Susie will also be voting on this. Okay, all those in favor? Fran?
Aye.
Okay, Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Susie, your second vote?
Aye.
Okay, and myself, aye. That is continued to our next meeting on November 23rd at 6:00 PM. Okay. So we have to decide as a board whether or not we're going to continue, or we're going to. postpone this thing depending on the weather.
Chair, I, Mr. Chair, I see Brad and Mark are back online.
Yeah, I'm back finally.
Oh, thanks. How long were you off? You have any idea?
We're back too, and we won't let Rick talk anymore because he knocked out all the power in Northborough.
And I just came back.
And we're putting Rick on permanent mute, I apologize.
Okay. Did you have any more to say, Rick, before you, you muscled?
No, I believe I'm all set, I'm more than happy to answer any questions from any board members. We're, we're an open book here, whatever you guys want to hear, we're. We're trying to just be a part of the town and, 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 you know, look forward to. Operating, you know, in the area and, and be a part of Northborough, we, we still haven't been bought the property yet, we're still trying to figure out whether. Whether we should or not, and it's based on decision tonight, if you all don't like what you see, then we're going to move on, but we prefer to. You know, be able to work with you and, and be a part of the town.
Paul?
So I have a question, so it, it, it does seem like there is a decent amount of work. That needs to happen to get the site to what the plans are currently show. What is your expected timeframe from? Hypothetically, if you were to get all the approvals to when you would be fully operational. As the plans were laid out earlier?
Really, there's not a lot to be done to the maintenance building, we're going to do the floor, the drains in the floor. Tight tank, aesthetically, we want to freshen up the outside, make it look good, and. There's not a lot to be done with that, that building's in really good shape, the administration building is as well, but. We're going to have to gut that, there isn't much, there's not much in the way of walls there. I'm, I'm envisioning, we'll probably be ready to get into the maintenance building within a year from purchase. And the other building, a year and a half, somewhere in that vicinity, there is a fair amount of site work, but that's what we do. And we're going to, whatever we can do, once I get the contractor signed and, and to go, I want to see how we can. You know, get this up and running, because quite frankly, we need this up and running quickly as we can because of our customers. The training facility is really paramount. The, the training that they are making us go through is almost increased threefold. So it's, it's a hands-on training and a hands-on testing. On how we put on the plastic pipe together and steel pipe together, regulations are in. on how we put on the plastic pipe together and steel pipe together. Um, regulations are in, increasing constantly, so you know, we, we'd like to get in there as quickly as we can. Um, you know, I'm probably being optimistic, saying a year, year and a half, but that's, that's what we'd like to do. Uh, we're not revamping and changing a tremendous amount. It's really about putting new wiring in, putting new walls up in the administrative building, and we're good to go. We need it as a more of an open space classroom kind of setting, um, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members with questions? Now, I said, I think we as a board have to decide whether we have enough information. We had Brad and Mark and Jeff Leyland that got knocked out because of power and missed part of this. It's the first as, as far as I've been on the board, but this has happened. So I mean. Brad, you think you've got enough information that you can make a decision on this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and Matt, we, uh, we worked here when we started, we put Suzie in as an alternate.
Right, I expected that.
Okay. So I guess we got five, we can vote on it. All right. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
Yeah, one, one last question, Mr. Chair, um, just for Fred, for staff. Uh, Fred, so I know we continued from last month. Um, just want your, your input. Are you comfortable with the chemicals, the way it's gonna be stored, the, uh, the safety mechanisms, if anything happens?
Um. Yes, as I indicated, it's basically a kind of a belts and suspenders, so putting all the chemicals in the maintenance building in the groundwater-free area is initially an excellent start. Um, and then having cabinets to store the containers within the building is a, is a plus, and then all material spilled or mixed with sprinkler water will be captured by the floor drains in the building and, and sent on to a tight tank, which is an added layer of uh, protection. Um, so the, myself and the groundwater committee were comfortable recommending those conditions be applied to any approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Suzie?
Um, so if it's approved tonight, I, I wasn't even thinking that they didn't own the property yet. What are the next steps that will happen? Because there is that it has to go to the planning board as well? And then, and then you would purchase or?
Yes, um, I can answer that. Yes, we um, we have signed the purchase and sale agreement, subject getting approvals for the use. Uh, because if we can't get approvals for the use, then we can't really use the property. So um, we would close once um, we got the special permanent site plan review from the planning board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add to that, um, Suzie, I know, um, you know, being fairly new to the board, that that's very common. I mean, it, it's, I think all the ti- and all the years I've been here, there was only one time when the applicant actually purchased the property before they got their permits. Um, but typically, that's what we see is that they, they have entered into a purchase and sale, but the applicant has entered into a purchase and sale with the, with the property owner, and again, it's all contingent on, you know, getting their permits. So it's very standard.
Thank you. I just, it kind of threw me for a loop. I was like, oh. And I knew the planning board had been mentioned too, so I was just wondering the timeline. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff?
Chair, could I just say one thing? I apologize that I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know the, what happened. But just looking at these plans and hearing what has been done and what is proposed, seems like uh, a lot of work, a lot of improvements to this property, and it seems impressive to me, so just wanted to say that. Although I'm not voting, that's my feeling.
Okay, most of what was said at the last meeting was said tonight, so I, I don't think you missed much, okay? Anyone else? Your motion?
No, Mr. Chair, it's a public hearing, so just need to check the audience.
It's a good idea. Have there any uh, people from the public that wish to comment? I don't see anybody. Can you see anybody on your screen, Fran?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, no.
Jim, can you tell us whether or not someone has a hand raised?
Uh, currently, no one has their hand raised.
Okay. Not seeing any public input.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We closed the hearing for uh, uh, two hundred Bartlett, I believe.
Okay.
Fran, second.
Okay, Brad made a motion, Fran seconded it. All those in favor, Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, we closed the hearing. Thank you. Should make a decision later tonight. The next meeting item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Z H S Trust for a special permit and site plan approval to change unit count from sixty-six units to eighty-eight units at the previously approved assisted living facility at thirty-nine to forty-three King Street, map forty-five, parcel one oh five, located in the Business West zoning district in the groundwater protection overlay district area three. And Mr. Rashid, is he here? Jim, can you tell us whether Rashid is available?
Uh, yes, I'm moving them in right now.
Okay, I can see Rashid's uh.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Rashid.
Okay, uh, should I turn my video on as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, would you like to present your, uh, what you'd like to do?
Yes, sir. I would like to see how I bring in my. Um, can you see my slide or not?
No.
Okay. Uh. Let's see. So. How do I? Uh, do I have the share on? Yeah, shared screen. So now uh, can you see it now, sir?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I'm here also uh, joining with the, my architect Sid Silver. Sid, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Hi. So I'll just take the uh, first half of the meeting, just to kind of explain where we are, and then we'll go to the uh, uh, next half for any detailed question as for engineering or architectural questions. So uh, Mr. Chair, uh, as you might recall, uh, it is first of all, very good seeing everybody after a long time. And uh, uh, it's really good to see that everybody is doing well through this very difficult time. Uh, and uh, basically uh, in twenty eighteen, May of twenty eighteen, you approved a plan, which is right in front of you right now. And just to recall your memory, that basically this um, assisted living was in the thirty-nine forty-three King Street, which is basically right here. Can you guys see my cursor as well?
Yes.
And then basically, um, based on the request from the neighbors, we talked about bringing the access from Route twenty or Southwest Cut Off through the thirty-eight King Street, which is also owned by Z H S Trust. And, you know, providing the access there. At that point, we did not have the Mass DOT approval, but once we got your approval and uh, uh, your conditions, we went to Mass DOT in conjunction with the town, and we had several meetings over the eighteen to twenty months. And we finally got the approval from Mass DOT for this curb cut. Uh, and uh, I would like to read you just a couple of paragraphs from their letters. Uh, they wrote us a letter on May twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, and when we presented this plan to them, they said, these collected, collective changes improve our overall site distance and safety in the area and is designed in conformance to our geometric requirements. And then they further asked, I don't want to bore you by reading the letter, but basically, they were further asking that we change the um, the two-way street here on King Street on the southerly side because they believe that once we take out the thirty-eight King Street, we basically build this access. We, as you can understand and imagine here, it is a pretty dangerous, you know, right or left and right here. So they were very pleased that this is going to improve tremendously, and they further said that basically they would like to see this portion of King Street go away. But suddenly, town had certain, you know, uh, town officials were recommending that we'd rather not take such a drastic change right away, because that would require a town meeting um, action. So then we went back and we agreed on just changing this portion to one way and then directing all the traffic this way, that goes this way, and, and try not to direct any traffic this way. So at that point, we actually then uh, you know, agreed, and then we had to sign a memorandum of understanding to give this portion of thirty-eight King Street to the town, so this could be used as a public way in the long run. So that took us about a year to go back and forth. So with all, without any conditions from Z H S Trust, uh, we accepted all the conditions of the town, and now we have memorandum of understanding. Meanwhile, Mr. Chair, I just want to bring in uh, now another uh, screen. Uh, if I can share that. Just give me one second. How do I, uh? How do I go to my desktop? I'm not sure. So do you know how do you, I said, can you bring in the, the new uh? Uh, can you bring in our uh, uh, updated screen?
Perspectives?
No, the uh, the engineering, the site plan.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Do you have the permission?
I'm not sure if you need to stop sharing, but I'll try share screen.
Yeah. Oh, actually, I, I, yes.
You guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So as you can see, that basically what we did in that regards, we actually you know, kind of blocked this access, and we now only have this access going into King Street, I mean, going into the assisted living. So basically, that's really the major change to the site plan in reality, and then of course, we had num- increased number of parkings. So when we did all that, we also hit COVID nine and COVID nineteen unfortunately, and we looked at the realities from our perspective operators, because this business usually is run with, you know, operators and financiers, and when we have been talking to our operators and financiers, they basically said that, that sixty-six units is not really a very viable solution. Uh, and we, our building size was such that we could accommodate more number of units. Uh, so we basically looked into our space, and without changing the flow, the site plan any further, or really any dimensional change on this, uh, on the building at all, we were able to, you know, accommodate the request of our operators and financiers, so that this become efficient. Uh, and, and it could be efficiently managed, uh, and it could still be attracted to the financiers and uh, operators. If you look around in all the facilities built in the area, especially the uh, Orchard Meadow by L C B right on Walnut Street in Shrewsbury, that is eighty-eight units, and that's built in the last three, four years. Likewise, any new facility built in the area, they are in the ninety-plus range, uh, ninety to hundred fifty range. So we could uh, you know, we were able to even fit, you know, more than eighty-eight units, but then we had back and forth discussions with the town officials, and we realized that if we go to like eighty-eight units or so, it might be a better fit and also have plenty of parking. So, so that's the reason, Mr. Chair, we are here today. We are not really making any kind of major change to the uh, to the site. We are not changing any dimensional uh, figures on our building. Uh, and we are really, one of the reason we were sixty-six units, because that was capped by the ten thousand gallon per day um, onsite septic plant we had. But since uh, you know, that time, we have talked to the town, and we are now looking at connecting it to the town sewer, and for that reason, we don't have that limitation either. So that being said, Mr. Chair, to make it uh, a project which will, which could be built and managed efficiently, we needed to make these changes, otherwise unfortunately, we will lose our connectivity with our operators and, and financiers, and we have checked with others, that won't be a possibility either. So we have gone a long way here. We spent years of time and a lot of money uh, in, in a lot of help from a lot of town officials to come to this point where we now have this, you know, point where we, we could take the next step. But to take really that step, we need our operators and financiers, and we really need to have a building uh, size and capacity that would be attractive to the marketplace. So uh, Sid, you may want to just add in a couple of uh, sentences in terms of what do you think in terms of the market as well as uh, any changes in the building, what have you?
Yeah, as, as Rashid mentioned earlier, that we didn't change the footprint of the building, the aesthetics on the outside or anything. Um, we were able to get the unit count up because on the ground floor, the right side here, we originally had as a memory support wing. The left side was assisted living, so there wasn't any common space here, then it were bigger units. And then also on the top floor, we had independent living, and that became all assisted living, so once again, smaller units at the top floor.
Um, okay.
But that was the extent of our changes. We have a a rough perspective here. This is what we had originally. As, as we mentioned earlier, we had two curb cuts here, two entrances onto the site. Um, I can bounce back and forth, but I'll just touch on the highlights here. We, so we closed this off. We, we're able to get more parking in this stretch here, and we were able to get more parking in this island. And because we, we had some restrictions in terms of paving with regards to the septic, so that was no longer an issue or constraint of ours, so we were able to get a few more spaces here and, and back here as well. Um. By making the ground floor, all uh, memory support wings, we added another courtyard in this corner and had, and we moved this one over a little bit. Uh, you can see the changes here. As I alluded to, we added spaces in the island. We continued this row of parking here, and we shifted this courtyard over, and we added another courtyard back here for the the second memory support wing, but the building itself has not changed uh, outside of those um, minimal changes to the courtyard locations. And we do a lot of uh, memory support, a lot of assisted living, and, you know, as Rashid mentioned, just you gotta get up into that ninety-plus hundred you know, uh, unit range for these facilities to, you know, function viably and be successful, and sixty-six units just wasn't enough for anybody that we spoke with or what, the types of projects to work custom, to work on as well, so. Yeah, I'm glad to answer any questions I, I can as well.
You want to operate any other facilities doing this in other, other locations?
Say again?
Mr. Chair, so, so, so basically, L C B, which is not too far away, it's right on Walnut Street and intersection of Walnut Street and Route nine, right across from Christmas Tree Shop in Shrewsbury. Uh, that is built within last uh, three years or so, and that has exactly eighty-eight units and exactly the same mix. And they have fifty-six parkings, sorry, fifty-two parkings. And they have fifty-six parkings, sorry, fifty-two parkings. And we are offering fifty-nine parkings for the same number of units and same services.
Okay, this plan shows seventy spaces. How many employee spaces are there?
No, sir, fifty-nine. I didn't say seventy. Where, where is seventy?
The plan received is part A three, has fifty-nine spaces on the front, six on the side. No, there's faces on the end.
No, sir, sorry, that's fifty-nine is a total number. Right, Sid?
That's correct, yeah. Total. I think we have it on the
Okay.
And I think that's in my letter as well.
Yeah, so you have these five, these six, and all this adds up to fifty-nine.
Hey, thank you.
Which is more than we need, but it's, I don't know how many more, extra six or so, five?
How many employees will you have working at any given shift?
Uh, sir, I answered that question uh, in the letter. We did a lot of study on that. We also called the um uh Executive Office of Elderly Affairs. They don't have any specific number. Then I talked to my consultants. And we also looked around in the uh, in the area. So we're looking at different number of employees at different times. So we're looking at uh, in my letter, I think I wrote nine employees in the first shift. And probably seven in the second shift and less than in the third shift, um, something like that.
Yes, nine is the most employees at one time.
Yes. F T Es.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other board members have questions? Well?
Um, yeah, I'm Mister Chair. Um, so you, i- in this uh current um picture up here, you, you show six spaces to the right, um, sort of going down to the bottom of the hill. If you can just go back to the last, like, the actual three D drawing that you, you had previously, right? So where do those six parking spaces?
Uh, right here between these two lines, these three lines here.
Okay, so
And those are extra spaces above and beyond what we need, but we figured since we could provide them, they'd be ideal for the employee parking down here.
So it, it, will the grade of the land then be de- uh, like equal to the, the, the road going down? I guess, or am I not seeing that through? That's, I mean, that's a wall, right?
It's a wall right now, but it would, it would have a recess in it. We uh, you know, three-sided wall to accept the parking. So this will get, this will get notched in there, if you will. But I, I know your, your point. It, it's not to, it's within the tolerances that are allowed for parking on a slope surface.
And I must admit, I, I must admit, we did not have much time for this rendering to modify. And actually, Sid and I discussed that point and you're smart to ask that question. This, 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 we should have changed to the new, this particular point that we forgot to. We talked about that just recently, today. So this actually rendering is made, you know, this came in from the vendor. And we realized that, that it needs to be modified to show to the plan.
Okay, a- and then Mister Chair, if I just have one more question. So uh towards the bottom right, uh, so if you, if you want to flip back to the other drawings, since this is sort of the three D rendering. Right? So you show five spaces, right? Uh, yeah, to the, to the right side there.
Yep.
Um, were those five spaces on the previous sort of plan that was laid out? I mean, it's been a couple of years, but if I remember, part of the conversation around that was uh, the fire department having access to the back of the building. Um, and I just want to make sure if those five spaces are new and in addition to or change to the previous uh plan.
There were, no, there was spaces in the previous plan. Can you open the previous plan, Sid?
Uh, I don't know, I don't have the previous plan. I had the previous rendering.
No, hang on.
They show it.
I think I have it.
We uh, from what I recall, we did have parking back there always. I'm not sure if it was the same amount or the same configuration, but um we did have parking there. You get that available, Rashid?
Yeah, but if you are on, I can't, I can't show.
Forgive me, you guys, if there's any other questions, I can dig through my files. I'm sure I could find that.
Yeah, I just, I, I guess, I guess my question for just general comment there is, I just remember the, the last time this case was, was up that there was definitely a question, concern, whatever, that from the fire department as far as like just being able to get around to the back of the building.
Yep.
Um, if those spaces were there, that they were there, but um, I just want to make sure that nothing has changed in terms of allowing access by the fire, fire department to the back of the building.
Yeah, we can certainly dig into it. We can find that file. We can send you the original.
Actually, no, I had that file. Uh, if you could, if you could, uh, Sid, give me, uh, if you, yeah. So let me do the shade screen.
Happy, while he's looking at for that file, did the fire chief see these new plans?
Yes, sir. I, I sent it to fire chief um, and uh fire chief told me that he had a conversation with the town officials and he doesn't have any further comments. I actually uh, you know, offered to meet, but he said he's all set. He has already talked to the town officials.
Um, so to, to the board and also Rashid, there, there is a review letter um, from the fire chief dated September twenty-third. Um, Rashid, have you and Sid seen that letter?
No, I have not.
Um, he is requesting that there be two curb cuts. Um, he doesn't, um, he's not in favor of the second curb cut being um, being eliminated. And I'll just paraphrase for you his, his letter, or unless you want me to read it, whichever.
Whatever's easier for you.
I mean, it's not that, it's not that long, but um, I reviewed the request for amended site plan dated September seventh, twenty-twenty-one for thirty for thirty-nine, forty-three King Street. And I have the following comments. There is no hydrant listed on the plans, so I'm unable to determine if it is located properly for use with the fire department connection. The change to one entrance exit is not acceptable. The developer is proposing a large population of at-risk individuals. We are already limited to access to the rear of the built, we are already limited to access to the rear of the building due to due to topography and reducing to one entrance will further complicate any potential operations. The areas on the plan labeled area of refuge do not appear to be of sufficient size. However, that can be addressed in the building plan review. And a final concern is the staffing proposed in the application. While not a direct component of the fire department site plan review, the number of proposed staff is, in my opinion, very low for a facility with sixty-two assisted living beds and twenty-six memory care beds. In the last twelve months, we have responded to sixty-two E M S calls at assisted living facilities in town. While the call volume is not an issue for us, this response level goes to show the burden placed on the staff at these facilities. I mentioned this at this time only because of the applicant's proposing, proposed staffing numbers, which will impact the number of parking spots. And that's from the um, Fire Chief David Parenti.
So for the record, Kathy, I have not received this letter. Was this letter sent to me?
Um, it, it, it should have been, and if um, if not, then my apologies for that, Rashid. Usually um, it, it goes out to the applicants as, as it comes to the, to the town hall.
No, no problem. I just haven't seen it. I was actually requesting any information. No problem. Uh, I'll, 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 I'll address that. But let, let me, Sid, can you just go back to the, the plan, please? Um, so basically, um, the reason we, we eliminated that and I'm not really opposed to not putting it back if that's, that's what's needed. I, 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 I have no problem there. I just wanna, I just want you to read the mass D O T. Uh, you know, they, they really were looking forward to eliminate even that portion of King Street. So we thought that if that is not happening now and this happens sometime in future, then at least we are building the building to the future uh requirement. But if, if the, I mean, if, if the fire chief feel that strongly and if that's what board wishes, we can suddenly put back that uh, uh, that uh entrance. And that will take away probably, uh, how many parking would that take away, Sid?
Lose three spaces.
Will take you three spaces. So it will have then fifty-six spaces. Uh, if, if that's the case, no problem there.
Mister Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I mean, right now, I, I just say we make a motion to continue. It's next month. Um, I, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with what's going on and I'd like to have the fire chief weigh in. I want the exact number of spaces. I want to make sure everything is, is good to go. And so I'm, that's, I'll put a motion out there right now. There's too many ifs, buts, whens, this, that.
Do you make a motion?
Yes, I am.
Anybody second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I, I, I've seen that, yeah, Brad's point is, we'd like a, a final diagram possibly with these um, with this second uh entrance put there, something approved by the fire chief where he I mean, I don't want to have a situation where they put in the second entrance and the fire chief says, no, that's not right. It'd be better if the fire chief weighed in, said, I want the entrance here. And he knows about the one-way situation on King Street and, yeah. There's, there's a lot of moving parts here. I'd like them all nailed down.
Thank you for making more eloquent, Mark.
Thank you for your second, Mark. All right, all those in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Well, Ken, I'm sorry, can you just add into the motion uh, when you're continuing this too?
November twenty-third. Yeah. The next meeting. Can you add that, Matt, Brad?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we continue uh thirty-nine to forty-three King Street to our next meeting on, in November twenty-third.
Mark, you seconded that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll vote on this now. Uh, Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
And myself, hi. So this data has continued to our next meeting and hopefully in that period of time, you can consult with the fire chief, present a final plan that's, he's comfortable with and uh, we can move on from here, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
The only other um, item on the agenda is the uh, the minutes from the last meeting. Has anyone, has everyone read them or? Anybody? Want to make a motion?
I don't see it on my agenda. Oh, do we have to also um, go back to the um two-hundred Bartlett Street?
To the what?
To two-hundred Bartlett.
The decision. Right, we didn't continue.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So that, so the minutes are your September um, minutes? If, if ever, is everyone all set with those?
People talking.
I didn't find anything wrong with. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the September minutes as they are.
As written.
Brad, you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Myself, hi. And we'll discuss uh two-hundred Bartlett Street. Anyone want to start?
Chair, I'll start. Um, I, I think they've done their due diligence. They've gotten us the very detailed um, chemical list that was requested the last time. The property, according to everyone, is going to be improved. And the reality is, is we've had an automotive shop in groundwater one there without any oversight or any improvement. And this is just going to help that whole area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Paul?
Yeah, um, so I, I think, um, you know, I think the overall general plan um, i- is fine in my opinion. Um, it's an improvement to the, the current um, two buildings. Um, I would like to, si- since we are, you know, effectively um, looking to approve a accessory use, right? Which is a, um, obviously, it's not the main point of what the business is there for. Um, and the, not the main purpose for them coming in front of our board, right? They still need to um, go in front of groundwater and they still need to get a special permit uh, for the contractor's yard because it is in groundwater uh, from the planning board. Um, and that they are specifically asking for the use um, this accessory use to be granted in certain, what is effectively the groundwater three portion of the property. And will only use, you know, the auto repair piece of it within that building. Um, and so I think I would be fine with sort of um, doing exactly or approving what they are asking for, which is an accessory use for an auto repair for the property located only within the maintenance building. Right? So gr- in, within groundwater three. Um, and I, I would also say my, my only concern um is because variances are not with the owner, right? And um, exists with the land. Um, that I would be open to um, having some sort of a, a, a check or a something in place that can, you know, prevent us or help um I guess the word I'm looking for is hedge, right? The exposure of the town to anything in the future, right? Typically, at least as long as I've been serving on the board, for any special permit that we um, typically approve, you know, we usually say it's with the owner, right? Which is obviously what we can do and with, well, within our rights. We cannot do that with a variance, right? We cannot say, hey, if it's Devro, you can have this use variance, it's only with you. Um, and so the only thing, the only uh the only sort of hedge that we can have is if we put a time limit on the accessory use. So that's kind of my general feeling about the case. I mean, you know, the, the applicant did say that they would take twelve to eighteen months to get up and running. Um, but I guess I would be open to having some sort of a use variance that's good for a certain number of years. As some way to sort of protect us down the road.
If, if I can just let everyone know, um, you can't put, you can't put a timeframe on a variance. Um, what, a- and the reason why the courts, part of the reason why the courts have said that is that um, it makes it impossible for anyone to receive financing. Um, because no, no bank will, will finance a project that may have to get you, you know, that could, that, that looks like it has to be taken down or could be taken down or, you know, cease use after so many years. So, so you, so, um, you, you can't put a time limit on a variance. And you're correct, the variance does run with the land. Um, but I think in this particular case, or actually, I think in any case of a variance, um, you know, you make it specific enough to the, to the, um, the property owner. Um, or excuse me, to the applicant and, um, with those very specific, you know, conditions that the groundwater advisory committee has suggested. But you can't put a time limit on it.
Anyone else, Fran?
Right, so, I mean, what the planning board has to do a special permit for, um, the groundwater one and three. The repair shop.
No, the planning, the planning board's doing a, um, they, they, it hasn't been applied for yet. But the planning board is a site plan approval process and a special permit for the contractor's yard.
Which is in the, is the administrative building?
Ri- right. It's, so the planning board doesn't have anything to do with the groundwater, with what, with, you know, what portion of the building being in what zone.
Okay, so the automotive repair is actually in groundwater three, but because it is part and parcel with groundwater one as well, that's, I mean, it's really not in groundwater one. It's in groundwater three. The repair shop. So it makes sense that it can't, it, once we say the use is allowed based on groundwater one, it doesn't matter who owns it or how long. We're saying it's okay, right?
Suzie? You had a comment?
Um, I was kind of piggybacking on what Paul said. So if we can't put the, um, the time limit on it, then we can make it as specific as we can to match up with this applicant and keep it and say something about it has to stay there and like, it say somebody buys it from them in ten years and they're like, ah, I kind of want to store some chemicals over in that building. Like, we can put something in there that everything has to remain in groundwater three and in this accessory building or what we're naming it. Is that correct, Kathy? What you were saying too?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can be very specific and?
Yep. And, uh, you know, say, you know, ten years from now, twenty years from now, you know, this company is, is no longer operating there and another company comes in and, and they're not doing exactly what the decision says. Then that would be, you know, upon the zoning enforcement officer, um, to say, you know, what you, you need to, you either need to seek a, um, an amendment to this original variance or, or, you know, you need to seek a, a, a second variance, you know, whatever it is, if they're trying to do something different and in a different location and, you know, with different chemicals.
Right. So just to, to follow up on, to follow up on Suzie who followed up with Paul. I mean, so what we're trying to do is say, if we approve this, we don't want a Jiffy Lube coming in in twenty years, right? Because that's also an automotive repair. So that's, we want to narrow the, if approved, narrow the, the decision so that something like that can't happen.
Yep, that, that, that's fair enough. And I, um, and I think with, um, with again, the, the conditions that the groundwater, I mean, Fred may want to speak more to those, uh, in, in greater detail, but, um, with those conditions, you know, coupled with, i- if you're to grant a variance, you know, for the accessory use, then, you know, it's, it's very specific to this particular company.
I think there's an issue with, we've already granted Lammy a variance so he could operate his automotive repair business on this same property. So we've already locked into that variance. So we, we've got to specify that, you know, the new plan is going to be the plan and, and there's no variation from the, the plan that's submitted to us that the that the maintenance building is going to be the only place chemicals can be stored or hazardous. Yeah, I don't see if we can do much more because you can put a Jiffy Lube in there because we've already given the variance to Lammy's. Fred?
The, uh, the recommendation from the groundwater committee, those specific, specific conditions were an attempt to limit what could happen there in the future. Uh, it specifically eliminated the use, the storage of any materials in the administration building. It specifically limited the amount of chemicals to be stored within the maintenance building at seven hundred and fifty-eight gallons. Um, anybody who comes after has to fall within that criteria or seek an amendment to the variance. Uh, that, my understanding is that they're looking for the variance for the site because part of the use of the property would extend over onto groundwater one, but not include the storage or tu- of any toxic or hazardous materials. But they are parking some vehicles that are associated with that business on the groundwater one side of the property. And that was okay with the groundwater committee simply because the entire drainage system is going to be overhauled and be able to capture anything that's in that portion of the property. The Lammy building is really not part of the discussion. They have their variance to operate the automotive repair in there and they're limited to just what was allowed in that one, which is basically oil changes, automotive repairs, brake cleanings and the fluids that go with that kind of operation. So a Jiffy Lube couldn't go in there and be considered the same operation as Lammy. And I don't believe a Jiffy Lube would fall into the criteria of what they're proposing in the maintenance building simply because seven hundred and fifty-eight gallons is not enough for a Jiffy Lube to operate. You could also elaborate on some of the conditions. They did specifically point out repairs to, um, two-cycle engines, small handheld, uh, equipment for operating on a construction site, not repair on dump trucks or heavy equipment, or you could put something into that effect as they had indicated that wasn't part of their operation in the maintenance building. The key thing that the groundwater committee was trying to get at was anything that could be considered hazardous or to the groundwater would be in the groundwater three portion of the property inside that maintenance building that has a floor drain and a tight tank. No chemicals be stored in the groundwater one side, but the parking lot does extend over both properties and would be utilized by all the vehicles that operate as part of the, the RJ Deveraux business use. There, I believe Kathy made it clear, but I wanted to add on to the, to just say one more time that there is not a return trip to the groundwater advisory committee if this variance is granted. There's a site plan and a special permit for the contractor's yard that would go before the planning board, but there is no return trip to the groundwater. Once a variance is granted, then there's no special permit for groundwater from the planning board in this, on the site.
Okay. Suzie?
So, um, sorry, I have to unmute because it's almost bedtime back there. So, um, getting a little rowdy. Um, so you had said, Fred, that they had said in their application or discussion with you and with us about the size of the, um, engines and everything and doing the small engine repair. Is that something that we can add into the decision for the, to follow the groundwater memo and the storage of this much and to stay in the building for vehicle repair and small engine or no? Like, can we get that specific or on what they're doing?
Again, the, the groundwater committee's recommendation were conditions should you decide to approve it, you can add, delete, subtract, whatever you choose to do with it as a special permit renting authority. Um, they were trying to offer a baseline of what they felt was necessary to protect the groundwater. If in fact, the special permit renting authority wants to go in more detail, um, I don't see why you couldn't. The, the whole goal is, as everyone, I think, is concerned about future uses of the property because it goes with the land, is to try to restrict it to this use, which is what Kathy was saying. And the groundwater committee thought they were offering those conditions, uh, would accomplish that, but certainly more could be added. More detail. Uh, Mr. Chair? Um, I was wondering, would it be worthwhile to set a ground, uh, gross vehicle weight limit on what can be serviced? Didn't they say this is most, this was pickup trucks they'd be working on and nothing heavier than that? So I assume between the pickup trucks and the Bobcat, that, you know, that they may be running around to move stuff. Are, are they also servicing their dump trucks?
The, uh, what, what I gathered, um, and, and I, and I think how, how we can kind of get there between, um, you know, Suzie and Mark's comments is I, what, what I didn't hear was any of us as staff or the board asked them, you know, exactly specifically what they're working on. They did talk about the two-cylinder. They did talk about, you know, he- handheld equipment, which I'm assuming is, I don't know, maybe like trimmers and, and, um, uh, um, you know, um, I can't even think of the name of it, you know, the grass cutters.
Right.
That we all use.
Weed whackers.
Uh, weed whackers, weed whackers. So when I was thinking handheld, um, Brad, so, so I, I don't, I don't have anything specific enough for my own comfort level, level to, to list actual pieces of equipment, but I think maybe you could cover it by saying that it's, you know, RJ Deveraux equipment. Because I do think Rick Gates talked about how they are going to maintain some of the fleet, but not all of the fleet there. So I don't know what the fleet means myself. I don't know what size vehicles that, that is. So that, so that's just my, my opinion is that, or my, my offering here, uh, it, that could be part of a condition is that, is that it's, uh, you know, uh, limited to, you know, equipment, uh, you know, owned and operated, owned and or operated by RJ Deveraux.
I, I think that, that might help. Uh, I'm sorry, Dick, I'm just jumping in. Um, I believe that what they had said during one of the meetings, I forget if it was groundwater or the ZBAs, that they lease a lot of their equipment, heavy equipment, the backhoes and things. They own very few pieces of equipment, even their pickup trucks are owned by the individuals who work for the company. In looking at the chemical list, it's mostly oils, brake fluid, uh, hydraulic fluid, uh, diesel fuel, stabilizer. So it's, it's normal, it's not, it's not heavy equipment type repairs. It's day-to-day oil changes and fluids and things like that. There doesn't even seem to be any antifreeze in there, but there is brake fluid and some other stuff. I'm not sure that there's much much, maybe, maybe you, uh, you limit it to, like Kathy said, equipment that's owned by them physically, not anything that there's renting or owned by someone else.
I, I do think they went into it in the, the last meeting a little bit and saying it was your standard, like pickup trucks and the smaller equipment and handheld stuff. I do remember that.
I, I did just find, um, and I'm sorry, Paul, this might be what you're gonna say. I did, I did just find, um, the list of vehicles. Is that what you're gonna talk about, Paul?
Uh, no, well, you got it, you got it.
Okay, they, um, uh, and I, and again, it's just a, it's a page that was, um, submitted by Dario Designs. And it, I mean, I, I'm assuming that, you know, obviously that this was done in conjunction with Rick Gates or somebody else from the company. But it, it, so it is a list of the various equipments. Um, they have everything, they have a list of company vehicles and then a list of large equipment, small equipment and, and then the kind of delivery trucks that might be coming to the site. Um, but it doesn't say, from what I can tell, it doesn't say whether they're owned and/or operated by them.
Hey, Paul, you had a comment?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I, I was just gonna, um, just reference sort of their application, um, where they said that they propose to carry out small engine repair and large and small vehicle maintenance in a renovated building, which is in the groundwater three, area three. So I took that, I took that to mean that basically their entire fleet, so that if one of their, um, I don't know, F three fifty truck needs an oil change, that that's what they're gonna do. It's not just a two-cylinder weed whacker that they're doing. I mean, the building's big enough that they would, it, it's safe to assume. I guess that, you know, w- what we could do, eh, or, or an option would be to say that they either have to be the owners or leases of the, um, the, whatever they're servicing, meaning like they can only do their stuff, right? So if they are leasers of a Bobcat or an F five fifty or an F three fifty, that is what they concern us.
Okay, that covers it. Jeff, you have a comment?
I just wondered if we limited so severely to what can be done in their shop, if they're just gonna send it over to Lammy's to be done in the other, in groundwater one.
Possibility. Paul, you ready, hand up?
Uh, yes, I did. I, I think what, um, Paul may have been referring to is if you want to talk about, um, making sure that, um, Deveraux works on their own equipment, either it should, maybe you want to think about having equipment that is either owned or in the custody of Deveraux equipment. That would handle anything that is leased or loaned to them that they are currently responsible for, but they have custody and control over. You know, and when they talk about some of the small engine repairs, they're talking also about, you know, um, power brooms, um, tampers, um, you know, jackhammers, you know, maybe, uh, compressor trailers. You know, those little compressor trailers that you see the drive jackhammers. You know, I think that's what they're referring to. Um, and just for a point of reference, some of those Ford three fifties and maybe even the five fifties, those are up to sixteen thousand gross, um, GBW.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Fran?
Well, so I still think we're just trying to figure out a way to allow them to have, do maintenance and repairs on the vehicles that they need to do their job, their work without it becoming some point in the future, a freestanding garage. But they did say many of their employees use their own vehicles in which they then pay them to use their vehicles and then would also be repairing those vehicles. So in some form or fashion, I'm not a wordsmith, some form or fashion, we need to say that all of the work that is done inside that facility for perpetuity has to go with the owner of the building and the work that they do. Because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to not allow this to ch- change hands somewhere in the future and have it be a freestanding garage, right? Somehow we have to figure out how to say that without limiting their ability to do their job.
Okay.
The, um, Paul? Uh, just, so just a, a general question. Uh, if they, if they change the footprint of the maintenance building, right, and we limit it to just activities that occur within that building, um, does that kick off a new variance? Or it was some sort of an amendment? I guess my question is probably to Bob or Kathy, meaning if we say you can only do these au- auto repair accessory uses within this one building, if they wanted to, I don't know, double the size of the building? Is it, can they say? Well, it's the same building. We're just making it bigger.
No, they, they, they would have to come back. Um, that, it would just kick off in general, you know, no, no worries about or no concentration here about groundwater, but just in general, uh, an increase in the size would kick off a review by the town. They would have to go through at a minimum of site plan, um, review, you know, um, so, uh, Bob, I don't know if you had anything to add, but so they would have to come back.
My, my expectation, Dick, is that they'd have to come back, but they would still be limited to the amount of chemicals that they were allowed to store within that building regardless of size because the building sizes, the volume of chemicals isn't predicated on the size of the building. So even if they made the building bigger, they couldn't, they couldn't store any more chemicals than limit, than are limited in the variant, initial variants without an amendment.
Okay. Fred, just a question you, uh, who's going to inspect this capacity to see if they, within the seven hundred and fifty-eight gallons?
Uh, well, we will do, uh, at the, the time they get their building permit, we'll do an initial inspection and then one of those conditions. one of those conditions that are proposed from the groundwater committee is an annual report certifying to the building department and the health department that they meet all the, all the requirements of the state and local bylaw.
There's no physical inspection from this point forward, right? After building's permit decision?
Once the building permit is issued and then, I mean, the zoning enforcement can go, officer can go down and inspect at any time, should he choose to, he feels as though there's a reason to do an inspection. Bob, I know that Bob and the, the building inspector and the fire chief inspect a number of buildings annually, but I don't know if, if this would be one of them and he could speak more to that.
Generally, you know, first of all, for the, before the occupancy permit or occupancy certificate can be granted, all of the terms and conditions set forth in the building code and any terms and conditions by any special permit granting authority, including conditions on a variance, all of that has to be met. And all these containment designs that would have been approved have to be in place on the date of the final inspection. And in this particular case, because groundwater is heavily figured into this and chemical containment is heavily figured in, I would probably bring the town engineer in with us to ensure that all those conditions are being met. That's for the occupancy. For continued inspections on a yearly basis, we, we can certainly set up a program where they're looked at annually.
Would that go into our decision or no? Set the annual inspection? Yes.
I would think you could write in an annual inspection as a condition.
Okay. I think that would be a great idea. Would, would the inspection have to be, would they have to be notified in advance of the inspection? Or would it be an inspection where you just show up and I'm here to inspect you yet?
Virtually every inspection we do, there's some sort of notification requesting that I go out. It's very, very seldom that we do a surprise inspection. I, I, I actually have not crossed that bridge. I have done surprise inspections on other projects before. Nobody's ever seemed to have an issue with it. If, if a entity knows that they have to be inspected, we could give them a timeline saying sometime in June, we will be swinging down. So we can give them a ballpark time or window. But, you know, it's not like we're coming down on June twelfth at two thirty in the afternoon. You know, so everybody's, you know, got brooms and mops flying around for the first four hours of the day.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I guess, just a, Kathy, have you been taking like a list of the conditions that we've just been throwing out there? Like, I have like a list of four, but I feel like there's probably six or seven.
I, I have my version of a list, but that's why we love these Zoom tapes. So I think, I think between all of us, assuming that either Paul or Mark will make the initial motion. I think.
So, so I guess if you want to just, I'll just say, what I have is the accessory use for auto repair will be contained within the maintenance building. Right? Sorry?
Uh, accessory of, of maintenance building on groundwater three.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. Just, just move the stake from one building to another. The second one was all the groundwater conditions for the letter from Fred on October twenty fifth. An annual inspection for the chemical list and amounts-ish. The, the servicing of the small engines or small and large autos, I think Bob had said it would be owned or in the custody of Deveraux. Was the phrasing that he sort of used.
I think we just saw the chair. I don't see him anymore. Sorry to interrupt.
I don't think he would have interrupted, so, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we don't want to move on, but that's exactly what I heard.
Did you have any, were, were there any, were there any others that were specific?
Dick, Dick's trying to get back in. But no, those are the ones that I had and I, I wrote down everyone's phrasing. And then Bob's final phrasing, I think, does cover it better than, than anything we said, which is owned or in the custody of. Yeah, so I, I didn't have any additional conditions, Paul. Let's just see, well, I mean, it's, oh, this might be Dick, hang on. Yeah, please. Okay, Michelle's gonna see if that's him. Okay, hang on one second. Okay, sorry, guys. Jim? Dick, Dick is trying to get back in, but for whatever reason, he's not being allowed back in. Do you see him?
Um, no, so ask him to try joining as an attendee. Maybe that would work, but you should, with the panelist invite, he should be able to get right in.
Okay, Jim, he's trying, but it's, it's saying, he's getting a message that it won't let him reconnect. Is that an internet issue on his end?
That's what I think. Have him try exiting out of the Zoom launcher and logging back in and also try having him open up an internet browser. And if the internet browser doesn't open up, then his internet is down.
Okay, he's gonna try to call in, Jim, so he should be coming through momentarily, hopefully.
All right, I'll keep an eye out.
Okay. So this is where we need Muzak or something, right?
Elevator music?
So Fran, maybe as, as vice chair, maybe just for the purpose of, of the minutes, just to say that, that we're temporarily on pause.
All right, well, it's only the clerk, but as the clerk.
Okay, sorry. See, I keep wanting that vice chair and, and.
As the clerk of the zoning board of appeals, we are in pause as the chair reconnects through failed internet access.
Does that need a second or no?
I think it was just a informational only.
That was a PSA.
Hey Kathy, just a question. Do we have to, I heard that there's like the Zoom meetings might be and that we need to vote to like, do we have to vote to like continue like meeting on Zoom as opposed to in person?
No, not that I'm aware of, but we can certainly, you know, double check with, with town council. They're the ones who.
Yeah.
All right. I'm back on.
Okay.
I, I guess, Dick, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Paul, yes.
All right, so I guess it probably got cut off while, while I was reviewing sort of the conditions that we were just sort of discussing. And so, so I currently have four conditions that we sort of discussed as a board. The first one was basically, you know, all automotive repair. So basically the, the accessory use, which is the purpose of the variance that we're in front of us today, shall be contained within the maintenance building, which is located within groundwater three. The second condition, which is all of the groundwater conditions for the letter from Fred on October twenty fifth. Third one was an annual inspection for you of all the chemicals and volumes. And then the fourth one was any sort of servicing of small engine repair, or a small engine or small or large vehicle should be owned or in the custody of the applicant RJ Deveraux.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so, Mr. Chair, I, I just dive in, I just don't want, not that, I, I don't think the applicant is doing anything in bad faith, but instead of just the maintenance building, I know, because that's what they're, they're maintenance building, administrative building. I'd just like to keep it clean and say all types of, of maintenance to any equipment are, is, is or are done on groundwater three, regardless of the name of the building. Just to keep it clean and simple.
Okay, I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, this is Fran. I just want to ensure that if we use the language that says in the custody of, that does not exclude their employees who use their own vehicles on work time and are repaired and or maintained by the company.
That sounds reasonable.
One other, I think, Bob, originally you said under the custody or control. Do you think control would extend to someone using their vehicle for business purposes? Therefore, it's under the control of Deveraux?
The, the, the complete phrase that's most often used is, in this case, it would be vehicles under the care, custody, or control. Okay. That's, that's kind of something out of the building code thing, but it, it, I think it kind of covers all the bases.
Yep, agreed.
Anyone else? Jeff? Suzie?
I just have one question. I know that we can't have a, have this stick to the owner, but we're using language in there that mentions the owner's name. And is that allowed? Because I don't want it to be like in the future have them say, oh, this isn't gonna work because it wasn't legal in the first place.
We could specify the owner of the property rather than Deveraux, I think.
You know what I mean?
But Deveraux will, will become, will become the owner of the property. But I mean, I, I think it's.
It's just a technical question I was wondering, because I know we kind of.
I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I think, given the fact that the applicant is RJ Deveraux and that's, that's what they're proposing, that it's that company that is going to be using this, you know, owning and maintaining this facility. I, I, I think it's okay to use their name within the context of the decision and the conditions.
Okay.
But again, I'm not an attorney.
So Kathy, so just to elaborate on Suzie's question, if RJ Deveraux sells to someone else, it's automatically assumed to be the owner at that time.
Well, if, yeah, if they, if they sell and the person is doing the exact same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then, then it's.
That would be my understanding.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, I think that's what Suzie was asking about. So if it transfers ownership, because we can't restrict it to the applicant, it transfers ownership, then even though you say RJ Deveraux in the applicant, in the approval, if they sell, then it becomes the owner, whoever the owner is at subsequent times down the road.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
And it doesn't go like null and void, because I didn't know if we should say RJ Deveraux, comma, or owner of said property. I don't know. Just said, that was just a thought.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, I mean, to me, I'm not voting here, but that makes sense to put, so, so after RJ Deveraux, it would be, just to be more specific, Suzie, we would put comma and, and or owner of the property, or owner, or owner of.
Owner, or owner of the property.
Okay.
Just so that if our, our imagined, our imagined Jiffy Loop wants to come in and they're like, oh, well, this, you're trying to apply this just to the prior owner and you can't do that here.
Yes.
You know, just having that little.
Okay, yep, thank you.
So, Paul, when I went off the air, were you making a motion or were you just suggesting?
I, I was just sort of. I was just sort of reviewing the conditions that we discussed and starting to put some words behind some, some of the thoughts and ideas that we were discussing. So, I mean.
So well, I just roll with it.
Yeah, we pretty much stole Dick while you were out, so nothing really transpired of significance.
So someone would make a motion?
Yeah, so I guess I moved to approve the application for two hundred Bartlett Street with the conditions that were laid out previously.
And then including the fifth one, which is all maintenance work shall be done in area three, groundwater overlay district area three.
Yeah, yeah, so let me know.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Variance passes. Okay.
So, Chair, can I just jump in? This is on another topic that Paul had brought up just before, while we were waiting for you to reconnect. And I can say that in Maine, the, there is a bylaw that was, had to be voted by jurisdictions if they wanted to have either hybrid or in person or Zoom meetings. I don't know if Mass has done it, but it's something that Maine had just done. So that may be something to look for. I can get the site for that if, if we want to look at it going forward.
Well, one of the things that I, that I do know, I think it's, there's something similar, Jeff, in that in that, um, we, we have a couple of boards that are meeting in person. Um, but you, you, there's no, we don't have any hybrid, um, uh, methodology or, or any way to do a hybrid meeting. So, so the, the boards either have to stay all Zoom or all in person. And um, so, so there's no, if, if you go all in person, there's no ability for, um, for anyone to, uh, you know, participate by phone. Um, the only thing that I don't know about all in person is if people still have to be spaced. Um, you know, uh, I, I don't know if the six feet is still in place. Certainly a mask is, because I know like, as an example, the trails committee has chosen to meet in person. Um, but they meet in a room where they, that, where they can sit six feet apart. They meet at the police station. So it's, so it's a bigger room than what we have here at the town hall. So, um, but I can, you know, I can find out for you about the six foot difference if people are interested in, in going back to in-person meetings.
I, I guess I'll just say, I mean, I'm fine with Zoom or, or either I should say, but if people want to stay Zoom, that's fine with me. I just, someone brought up saying that boards are looking to vote on this stuff. So I didn't know if that meant that we needed to discuss it.
And I, I think Kathy, as much as I would love to be back in person, the fact that the majority of our agenda is public hearings, we cannot control the volume of people that would show up at any one meeting. So, um, it's not the same as the trails, that is an open to the public, but not public participation.
Yep, nope, very good point.
Great point.
Anybody else? Matt, how do you feel?
Um, you know, of course, I would like to be back in meeting, but uh, I, I understand Fran's consideration that uh, people are just, we don't know. If a hundred people want to see the meeting, then yeah, we have to let a hundred people in and you know, we've had those kind of meetings.
You're definitely right, Suzie?
Um, I will say that I am on the community affairs committee and we do meet in person at town hall now. Um, so we did choose to move in person, but it, like you said, we don't have a public hearing portion. If somebody wants to come, all of the agendas and everything are posted online, so we could have visitors. But um, it's just easier for us to work in person. And I think right now, since we're still in the pandemic, I think this format is great for meetings like this in the board of selectmen and the planning board, because you know, if there is someone in the public that really has a stake and wants to come, but doesn't feel comfortable in public, I feel like that's a big hurdle and you might miss out on those opinions. So I, I, I would prefer to stay on Zoom for the winter, but um, I mean, although part of me would like to be in person, but um, that's, that's just my, I'll go unmute now.
Hey Brad, you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'd love to be back in person. Um, but I, I think the Zoom has really opened up the ability for folks, uh, especially me as a young parent, people that can't attend the meeting in person and they can voice their opinion. Sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes that's a bad thing, but at least it's more open to the entire community. So, especially for the winter, I'm, I'm fine continuing with, with Zoom.
Yeah, unless anybody wants to vote on it, I, I think we just continue on with the Zoom meetings until this thing gets a little bit better and settle down. I mean, I know it first started with two weeks back in March of twenty twenty, but uh, God only knows where this is going, but, you know, I think meeting to meeting will just decide, you know, what the next one's gonna be and for now, we'll just stay with the Zoom.
Agreed.
I mean, I'd like, I would love to get back to in-person meetings, especially since I fell off tonight.
Well, half of us lost power for two minutes as well.
My light's blank, so. All right, anything else?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll start the motion.
All right, all those in favor, Fran?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Myself, aye.